Okay, man.
Let me continue in the silence. I'm not opposed to it.
Okay.
Pretty science.
Well, we're, uh, we're.
I'm making a lot of money, that's not, I'm not anti.
Well, like I said, I mean, I want to talk to a couple of guys. Some council, talk to council members at the right time.
I think you're on the right track. Bring the town and just give a little bit of civic duty approach. Those decision makers.
Yeah, get your mindset on what you got to do tonight.
John had a good conversation, he sent me that stuff, I saw it, it's good.
Yeah. I just knew there was a help for me, and it was like, okay, maybe, you know, it can't hurt to come by here. I wanted you to know something about what Jason's doing, because we're working together. And we, we know that it's going to be great for the city, you know? Even announcing and putting ads up for the city and festivals and things like that. We just got to kind of get over the prejudice.
That's why this is so important. Sure. Single poles in the wood, the wood were brought, they were.
Yeah.
I think you make the monument signs now with all the.
Well, we're going to try to do things for it.
Fredlin is, I don't know if you've met Fredlin, she is our zoning director.
Okay.
She'll be involved in that process too.
Okay.
I'll share with her anything you guys have got.
Okay, alright.
Martin's in the, yeah, Martin's in the.
Who's the clerk?
Community Services, but he does a lot of zoning.
Okay, I think that's it. Do I need to put anything else? I don't know, I'm not a downtown business, I have a small business. No. Okay, sorry.
That's okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let us bring the City of Spartanburg City Council meeting to order. We'll see any scouts in the audience this evening. So we're, we're going to stand and have a moment of silence, and then we'll be led by the Pledge of Allegiance. Hey, man.
May I pretend you might lead us in your pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have item three, approval of the minutes for the March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five City Council meeting.
Set moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any that oppose? Ayes have it. Item four, approval of the agenda for the April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five City Council meeting.
Set one second.
Alright, quick draw tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any that oppose? Ayes have it. This time, we have a few public comments. The way the public comment works is that we're going to give you two minutes to speak on what you would like to speak on. I'm a pretty big stickler for the two minutes. So once you give us your name and your address, the two minutes starts. So Andrew Mickley, Mick, Mickley.
Mickley, yeah. I'm Andy Mickley, and I'm at nine-three-six Hansley Court in Spartanburg.
Thank you.
My name's Andy Mickley, and I represent a grassroots Spartanburg organization we call the Plastics Awareness and Reduction Team, or PART for short. Our mission is to inspire and empower Spartanburg to reduce plastic waste through raising awareness, advocacy, and sustainable practices. Our group has representatives from local city and county governments, our colleges and universities, and Spartanburg businesses, as well as concerned citizens like me. Earth Day is twenty-two April this year, and we use the whole month to encourage committees to consider how they can better be stewards of the planet. Every day, millions of plastic bags, bottles, utensils, and packaging are discarded after just one used, use. Plastics make up seventy-four percent of all South Carolina litter. These plastics do not simply disappear, instead, they linger in our landfills, clog our waterways, and break down into microplastics that pollute our soil and water. In fact, studies show that plastic waste has infiltrated every corner of our environment, from the deepest ocean trenches to the food we eat and the air we breathe. Microplastics and nanoplastics accumulate in our brains, lungs, stomachs, intestines, liver, and reproductive organs. Plastic consumption has quadrupled in the past thirty years and is expected to triple in the next thirty. Meanwhile, global plastic recycling rates have failed to reach two digits. Less than ten percent of all the plastic ever produced has been recycled. My colleague Amanda Carles will be the next speaker.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Amanda Carles, come on up.
Good evening, Amanda Carles, six-nine-six High Garden Lane. I am a resident and consumer at establishments in the city of Spartanburg. So following up on Andy's point, what can we do? They answer lies and multifaceted approaches that involve government action, community engagement, and individual responsibility. In terms of government action, we need stronger regulations and policies that limit the use of single-use plastics. This includes banning or imposing fees on plastic bags and utensils. In the U.S., twelve states have banned single-use plastic bags. Seventeen cities and counties in South Carolina have also enacted similar bans. Additionally, some states and cities have restrictions on plastic bottles and utensils. Additionally, we should encourage businesses to adopt single, sorry, adopt sustainable practices and use eco-friendly alternatives. In this sphere of community engagement, public awareness campaigns are essential to educate residents about the impact of plastic waste and the importance of reducing it. Initiatives like community cleanup events and recycling drives can foster a sense of responsibility and collective action. Visibility of sustainability initiatives that community invents also impacts buy-in. Finally, each one of us has a role to play. Simple actions such as carrying reusable bags, bottles, and containers can significantly reduce the amount of plastic waste we generate. By making conscious choices, we set an example for others and contribute to the larger cultural shifts towards sustainability. PART has initiated a program to supply our shelters with unused and unwanted plastic cutlery that has been thrown into our bags from takeout restaurants. We are also developing a plan to green-certify local organizations that adopt practices that are kind to our environment. April, Earth Month, is a time to consider what you can do to protect our earth from plastics and other environmental hazards. In future months, we hope to bring you additional recommendations on how we can reduce single-use plastics in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for that bit of information, really. Alright, item, I'm not item three, number three, Ms. Keisha Whitner and Blake Coleman. Before I go any, is it Whitner, Whitner?
Said it right the first time.
Whitner, thank you.
Yeah, Ray would have.
Leave it alone, leave it alone, Mayor Rice, leave it alone.
Listen, leave it alone, because Ray Whitner will show up, right? Lakeisha Whitner, two-seventeen Comber Drive.
Blake Coleman, one-oh-eight Ponder Road.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of City Council and all distinguished guests. As you've heard, my name is Lakeisha Whitner, I am the owner and founder of Children and Choices. It's a nonprofit organization dedicated to supporting families through in-school literacy tutoring for parents. Our program equips parents with the necessary skills to effectively assist the children with homework, fostering a stronger academic foundation at home. In addition to our literacy initiatives, we proudly partner with the City of Spartanburg Parks and Recs on December to host Mary Clippers. This initiative provides school-aged childrens with free haircuts and hairstyles from skilled barbers and stylists, ensuring that they look and feel the best as they continue their academic journey. This December, this past December twenty-twenty-four, marked our tenth year of service to this community program through the impactful partnerships. Thanks to the dedication of all volunteers and the support of our community partners, including local businesses, nonprofit organizations, civic groups, churches, my church helped us start it, my church, Vision of Faith, ooh, Lord, ten years ago. We were able to save this year, well, last year, over two thousand dollars in savings for parents with haircuts and hairstyles. Most importantly, we provided meaningful, meaningful support to sixty-five students and twenty-five families. Demonstrating the empower of community collaboration, we are incredibly grateful to the City of Spartanburg Parks and Recs, whose presence is always present each year, which helps ensure a welcoming and safe environment for our families and children. Their partnership reflection, reflects a shared commitment to uplifting our community and creating positive interaction with local youth. As we move forward in this, in this process, I believe in succession planning, and today I would like to announce.
Go ahead, finish up.
That Blake has accepted the responsibility of becoming my successor for Mary Clippers. With that being said, we would like to present today our token of appreciation to the City of Spartanburg Parks and Recs, this plaque. I'd just like to say thank you, Mayor Rice, and all of the team that believes in this, in our efforts, Kim Brown, One the Chiefs Homes, and all the amazing staff with Parks and Recs. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Can we get a photo with you, Mayor Rice?
Sure, sure, you got time, good. This is the other way around.
Okay.
I'm usually the one presenting. Make sure Jim gets you in the talk.
Thank you.
I won't put it in mine. Mr. John Moore.
My name is John Moore, my address is three-ninety-seven Gentry Street. I'm just here today to show gratitude to Councilwoman Brown, she really cares about her constituents. I had a NUSA issue I was dealing with for quite a while, and I contacted Councilwoman Brown, and the communication throughout the whole process was just impeccable, and I really appreciate it. She delegated the task to Kevin Limehouse, which was the same. We never stopped communicating with each other, we stayed on this until it was solved. So I really appreciate Kevin and staff, they definitely executed to the T. The continuity that I received from Councilwoman Brown and Kevin Limehouse gave me the courage to make another investment into the city. So, you know, on their part, you know, it helped me make my decision. And also, I had a friend in Highland community, he said the City of Spartanburg contacted him about buying a strip of his property. I put him in touch with Councilman Sally, and I guess after that talk, he called me back, he said, John, in fact, I might donate that land. So I'm pretty sure Council Sally put the sudden trauma on him, alright? Thank you, guys, have a good one.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Appreciate that. Kimberly Branch.
Hello, good evening. I'm Kimberly Branch, four-four-five Old Leonard Road, Woodruff, South Carolina, two-nine-three-eight-eight. I'm here asking for support of our downtown, our Spartanburg downtown home clock. I started a petition five days, less than five days ago, I believe, in regards for seeking support. I have over a thousand names that have signed the petition to, to say no to the relocation, and we were wanting to address the City Council to see if that we, we could seek your support in that decision as well.
Okay, thank you. We, we don't usually answer questions you can get with a council member that may be in your district and talk with him, or if you can give my office a call and we can have a conversation about it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. And we have Mr., item six, Strategic Spartanburg Update, presenter Dr. Midas Hampton, Executive Director.
Get my phone here for my timer, because I was told I have too many slides, so be quick.
Okay, so you have, you know, you, did you recognize that two minutes that just went?
Oh, definitely.
Take your time, Dr. Hampton.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I am Midas Hampton, the founding Executive Director of Strategic Spartanburg, and I am, one, I want to say thank you for the fervent support of the work that we do. And I just want to give an update about what we've been doing thus far. We are about a year, two years into being a full nonprofit, so I wanted to let you all know what we've been up to. Start here first, because I think it is vitally important that we understand why we chose community-driven, data-informed for transformative change. I've been doing this work a long time in different countries and different communities, and I've never seen data jump off the page and do the work that is necessary to move an outcome. I've always seen community rallied together in order to make their community better, and so we are community-driven. The community tells us where we go, data-informed, we leverage the information for hopefully positive transformative change. Few things we believe as core is that data are real people, they represent observations of real people. The lived experience is a valid form of evidence, it is data that hasn't been coded yet. And so when people walk up and say, well, it's just happening to me, you could be indicative of a larger situation. We believe that all means all in our community, because when we say residents from all across Spartanburg County, rural to urban areas across the board, we support. Another big thing I wanted to, to note and, and really drill down on is that I want to make sure everybody understands that there's a difference between data and statistics. When we say we looked at the data, I ask you, what have you done with it to make the decision? It is not the same thing. Data tells you what, statistics tells you more about the patterns and trends. And so we leverage statistics in order to make our decisions. Grew out of the Critical Indicators to the Community Indicators Project, now Strategic Spartanburg. So we are the second oldest community indicator project still running in the country. Our mission wholeheartedly is to leverage data and engage community in dialogue and strategy that leads to positive change in Spartanburg County. We do this through a few things. We partner with almost everyone in order to do it, because we know that these are complex problems and we need complex solutions. We leverage our four pillars of impact to do the work. So we talked about what it is, but how do we do it? We, we identify the data, drill down with research as to why the data are the way that they are, leverage that, those findings for policy and practice solutions, and then evaluate whether or not it made a difference. We have some key assumptions that we, we hold true. One is huge, better data and evidence equals better decisions and outcomes. As my granny used to say, when you know better, you do better. But we know a lot of people who know better that may not do better, and so this is a huge assumption. One, another one is positive change requires holistic and curb-cut approaches. And then lastly, people use the things that we create. We can create phenomenal things that people never use, and it won't be any help. In our Community Indicators Project, a few updates there. If you have not known, we have seven different indicator areas that have been chosen by community over hundreds of hours of conversations with community. We have a new Community Indicators Dashboard on our website, so this is just the data. If you want to come and they have different things that they want to pull data down for, for grants or advocating, they have the data across all seven of our indicator areas. We have an upwards mobility dashboard with a whole bunch of data. The biggest thing with us is that we wanted to make sure at a population level, we were looking at the upward mobility that was happening at specific neighborhood levels. And so sometimes we can get hyper-isolated, and so we wanted to make sure we have a framework that's overall looking at the data, and this is also live on our website. Another big thing I wanted to point right now is this concept of ALIS. ALIS stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. These are people in our community who are working one, two, sometimes three jobs who cannot make ends meet. And so I wanted to expand this conversation around who is in need in our community beyond this idea of the federal poverty level to this idea of holistically ALIS. In our Community Research Center, we've been doing quite a bit, we have the consortium, which is, we have seven different universities in our sphere. And so this is an opportunity for all seven of them to step into the consortium and do research that has direct impact, actionable research for our community. So how do we pull those brain trust together? We've updated the Racial Equity Index, in twenty-eighteen it was released, and then we did a five-year, where are we now, update of those data. That report is live on our website as well, and the difference with this one is we had different modalities of understanding information. So we have the larger report, and then we have an executive summary, and then we have a one-page that just shows you the differences. Another thing from our CRC is the State of Youth and Mental Behavioral Health Report. We just had a launch of that and a really good conversation around it. These data is a little different, again, statistics, we are starting to look at what relationships give us the biggest outcome. So instead of knowing just what is happening, I want to know if we touch X, does Y move? And so this is the data that allows us to have that conversation. And our Policy and Advocacy Institute, we'll be coming out, we already have a white paper on our website that just frames the issue. And then we're coming out with a, a policy brief that specifically connects the findings from our research with policy alternatives that can make a difference empirically. We also did Poverty and Spartan, and Housing in the City of Spartanburg, so if you have not seen that, please check that out on our website as well. It really dives deep into this relationship in our community. And then our Measurement and Evaluation Space, shameless plug for Nonprofit Connect, I'll be there. And one of the biggest things we like to do is provide technical assistance to our nonprofits at no cost. And so they come in for hours at a time, and this is just one of the ways in which we do it. Instead of them coming to us, we'll go to them and have that conversation around theory of change and logic models. Why that's important, if the entities that are doing the work to improve the lives of our community members don't understand these metrics, they are having a hard time having a conversation of how they've made impact. And so we want to make sure that every dollar is used and maximized to its utmost ability. We have to be able to build the capacity of our nonprofits who are doing the work in the front lines. One of those nonprofits is Brown Girls Read, we did some evaluation work with them, creating surveys. Another is Angels Charge Ministries, we did some evaluation work with them as well, building out their logic model so they can understand and tell their story better. And then we serve as a backbone support for Movement Twenty-Thirty, specifically in the two neighborhoods of Highland and Northside. We also serve as a backbone support and evaluation support with the Promise Neighborhoods Grant, specifically targeted for the South Side. We believe that every nonprofit stands in a gap, and this gap, the idea is I, as a nonprofit, want to put myself out of business. I don't want to be in the business of the disparity, the business of the problem. And so for us, how do we put ourselves out of business? If all stakeholders in Spartanburg County are focused on critical work of gathering data and evidence to build collaborative strategies that address the social and economic disparities in prosperity, the county making the county a place that affords ample opportunity for all of its residents, then we can close our shop. This is the team, because I get to stand up and look pretty, well, this is the team who does the work. And without them, it is really hard to make the kind of difference we're trying to make. Lift Serve, if you want to be on the Lift Serve, so you can get all the updates of all the reports, all the events, you definitely can. We also have a Community Leisure, which is just our newsletter that goes out, and then also Dialogue and Discourse, which is a blog that encourages everyone to engage in the conversation. Whether you feel like you are a content area expert or not, your lived experience is a valid form of evidence. You are a content area expert in your lived experience, and so we invite you to have a conversation and engage in the debate. And that's my time. How did I do?
Great. Questions for Dr. Hampton?
Sure.
Thank you for that. You mentioned this, all of this information is online, is it, can, is it printable?
Yes.
offline to like a file?
Yeah, all, all PDF form, printable, and we also have for our last report release, some executive summaries. But generally statistically, people don't like read the things anymore, I know it's a dying thing. So if people ask for it, we can definitely provide those types of.
Old eyes. Instead of staring at it.
Sure.
Um, Dr. Hampton, thank you for your presentation. You look at a lot of things, obviously, a lot of statistics and data. I appreciate the call-out, I know I'm guilty of using that incorrectly. But when we think about a local policy, you know, the seven of us that are sitting up here, what are some of those data points? Is that the right, my, okay? That you think we can have the largest impact on, or what are, what are some of the things that you look at and you're like, there's a, there could be a policy change that could be the X that moves the Y, what are some of those examples?
That's a good question, hard question, appreciate it. I think what's unique about local government is that proximity, right? And then, so it's a lot of the distance between the policy as drafted and crafted, and implementation and impact is a lot shorter than say the state or federal or county level governments. And so I think that some of the, kind of your low-hanging fruit is tapping into the things that are already happening. And so, for instance, one of the findings from the Racial Equity Report was around underweight births and birth, and you know, just maternal health. And then as we correlate that with mental health, like maternal mental health is significantly important in a family dynamic and structure. You talk about centering the child, we got to make sure the adults are okay. And I think something like that, right, Direct already has a through point that's doing the work, a nonprofit or entity that's already doing the work that needs some maybe political and policy backing that expands it beyond what the scope is to what it could be.
Awesome, good. Midas, do you mind real-time what we're talking about around evictions and what that could lead to? Around what, Mitch?
Evictions.
Evictions, okay, on the spot. Yeah, so you stay ready, you don't have to get ready. One of the things that has always been, I've done policy work, affordable housing policy work when I was in Washington State. And then specifically, there's a place to call home, and it is in the room, has the, you know, prevent, you know, serve house piece, right? And so when we think about our prevent work, what can data, what can information do to help us prevent homelessness? And one of the biggest contributors to homelessness is evictions. Because once you are evicted, it stays on your record for seventy years, and then it's harder to get a secondary dwelling unit or another dwelling unit. So how do we make sure we prevent the eviction from happening to begin with? And so we can kind of circumvent that backend of homelessness. So one of the things that we were thinking through is just leveraging filing data, leveraging the ideas of eviction, housing courts in order to prevent or mitigate the level of evictions that we're seeing. It's not just in Spartanburg, we're seeing this across the country, and so when you think about, again, what can local government do? There's a number of things around eviction that local government can have the power to do, save, you know, the, the state's mandates. But I do think the work that we're doing and the conversations that we're having right now around leveraging eviction kind of data to not just tell you what the problem is, I don't want to admire problems, that's not what I'm here for, I can stay home. Like, I want to find the seemingly intractable problems and collectively find solutions through the information that we have available. And that's one of the ways in which we can do it, through the eviction data.
Dr. Hampton, thank you. While all statistics are data, not all data are statistics. Love it, love it, love it. All means all, all means all. So, Dr. Hampton, thank you for your work. Is, 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 two years already?
Yes.
Wow.
Time.
Time does fly when you're having fun.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, man. Thank you, Midas, I do appreciate it. We have item seven, ordinance, ordinance to amend the City of Spartanburg, South Carolina zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan, land use element by amending section two-oh-six, change the district boundary specifically to property located at six-twenty Union Street. Presenter will be Fredalin Frazier. Thank you, Planning Director.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Good to see you this evening. We actually have two zoning, rezonings before you today, and what I'll do is briefly go over the process so that they're, they both follow the same process, and then we'll dive into each one.
Got you.
So in terms of the zoning process, why we're here right now is that we held the legally required public information session back on March twelfth. And so that's required for any type of rezoning application. That was held. That was held, and we had several comments, but they were also included within your packet. And in following that, we had the meeting with, where both of the cases were presented to the planning commission. Each one of those received a favorable approval in terms of review by the planning commission. And then we're here today because we're, you're here to see the first, first reading of the, of the ordinance and the rezoning. Should it be approved, either one of them approved this evening, they would then advance to your March 28 meeting. So that's the overall process and what got us here. And I'll dive into each one of them right now. So the first one before us is 620 Union Street, and the owners are here as well this evening. The applicants and owners are here, Mr. and Mrs. Jones. So their request is to reclassify this unit, this parcel from zoning of R6, which is general residential, to LOD, which is limited office. And so it's approximately 0.3 acres, the parcel is currently vacant. And you'll see here as we go through some of the site photos that it's surrounded by a mix of uses. If you travel up and down Union, as we all do, you see that it is a corridor in transition. And the yellow there is a parcel that's subject that we're reviewing today. And here are some nearby photos, that's the actual site here. And then as you look across the street, well, each side of the property, so there are a mix of offices, there's some residential on one side of the property, as well as directly across the street, we have the light industrial, the light building that you may be familiar with, and the car wash located here directly across the street from the property. The District 7 office is also located not too far from this property. So this map here really gives you an idea of the array of zoning surrounding the property. You see the star there, that is the existing R6. But as I mentioned, you'll see a transition of uses up and down this corridor, where there were formerly single-family homes that have slowly transitioned into office spaces, and then some of them even more intense uses. So to give you an idea of what we have and what's being proposed, with the R6 general residential district, as I mentioned, typically you see the single-family zoning there and in uses. You're allowed up to 10 dwelling units per acre if it is, you know, R6. And there are non-residential uses that are also allowed in this area as well. So that's why you see offices and other uses along the corridor. Well, the proposed limited office unit zoning here will also allow them to promote their project, which will include residential units to it. So that's why we are actually proposing this use, because it gives the proponents or proposers an opportunity to expand the use of their property. So this is an example of what they are proposing. Again, it is a not-quite-live-work use. They're going to have co-office, co-sharing space at the bottom, at one, on one level here, and then above, they want one rental unit, and the second unit would be occupied by the actual owner. So there are several criteria that we have to review as part of a rezoning, and the five include consistency, compatibility, suitability, and marketability and availability. So based on these findings and the analysis, the recommendation, both from the staff as well as the planning commission, was for approval. And I'll just briefly go over how they met these criteria here. So the, we feel as though the LOD designation aligns with the conservation map. If you've been studying the comprehensive plan, we know, you know that this is an infill growth corridor. So this use clearly aligns with that transitional use that we're seeing along the corridor. Compatibility as well, because across the street, you see this type of use in, in the adjacent area. Suitability, because it also meets our long-term vision, encouraging mixed use around this corridor. And then marketability, we do not feel as though there's a, an issue in terms of adversely impacting the marketability of this particular parcel as well as surrounding parcels. In fact, it could be potentially enhanced because of this rezoning. And the availability of utilities are there to support the redevelopment. So as I mentioned, these are the reasons why we feel as though the designation is compatible. It's something that, we're not getting ahead of the zoning code we write here, that might be a question that you have, because we have evaluated in that context. It's tied back, one, to the comprehensive plan. This is identified as a priority corridor, and it's also an infill growth corridor. So it checks all the boxes in terms of the future uses that the community has expressed they want to see along this corridor. And what we've documented as a community is what we want to have the corridor eventually evolve into. So I have, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer those, and also the applicant is here as well.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Frazier, and Councilwoman Littlejohn.
Yes, is the bill the present tonight?
Yes.
The owner of the property.
The applicant. Stand up so we can see who you are.
Just raise that. Awesome, awesome.
Thank you.
You have questions? No questions? Any questions?
No, but I'll make a motion.
No, entertain that.
Second.
Motion to approve the rezoning.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any that oppose? Ayes have it. So we're going to go right on into B with 577 North Church Street. She's already explained the process and can go on to you.
Great. The one thing I do want to point out here is that when we, when this case was presented before the planning commission, we did have the adjacent property owner join and provide comments, though those comments were also inserted in your packet.
Correct.
And so you have that for reference as well. He may very well be here as well. So this particular property may be familiar to some of you because it is its second, I guess, bite at the apple here. It was presented to both the planning commission, where it was approved in 2021, and then came to city council for first reading but was denied. At that time, I believe, and the applicants are here as well at that point in time, the zoning classification that was identified, the council wanted to see that, have them explore other options. And I'll explain exactly why that may have been the case at that point in time. But the applicant is here as well. So this is a unique parcel because it actually has split zoning. So you'll see on it in a minute here that it has general business district as well as a residential designation. I'm not quite sure how that came about, but it's, that's the current zoning, as well as the adjacent residential, where the adjacent residence is located, has split zoning as well. So the proposal here is a vacant parcel, what, at one point in time, the church was there, and so you know that it has been recently demolished. But right now, it's a vacant parcel, right under two acres. And it is surrounded by what we call government and institutional uses, for the most part. You have the hospital there, you have Wofford, and directly across the street, you see DT3, DT4, and DT5 zoning. So here's the parcel in question, and immediately south of that is the large residential parcel that I mentioned, but surrounded by the institutional uses. And directly across the street is the hub. So kind of orient yourself to, there is the front of the property, the church is no longer there. Directly across the street is the catty corner, I would say, is the hub, as well as the Fitz, it's not the Fitzdale, the name of the senior housing there, that's right behind the hub. And here is just a picture of the intersection that provides you the context in terms of the uses that are currently right there at that intersection. So this map here really depicts that unique situation in terms of the mixed zoning that I shared with you. As you can see, both parcels are yellow and purple. So one thing will be, two things will be accomplished if this moves forward. We'll have a consolidation of the zoning for this parcel as one designation. And then hopefully, it is also more aligned with uses along the corridor as a DT designation, as opposed to what was previously promoted. So directly across the street, you see the blues and the teal are all DT zoning.
Yeah.
And then the green is the institutional use. So a little comparison again, here are the two uses that currently exist on the site and adjacent property. So we have the general residential, which is the R8. Typically, you know, you can build, sorry, seven dwelling units per acre for the R8. And then the general business is really there to support businesses that serve more than just a neighborhood. So there, the character of the businesses that you find in the B3 are more than neighborhood-serving businesses. But what's being proposed here is the DT5 downtown district, which really allows that second layer of review, which is important, if you've witnessed what went on with the hub across the street. That extra layer of review really helps enhance the level of design that you get and the product that you receive at the end. So with the downtown code being extended to this property, there are several elements that are important for consideration, both by staff and the DRB. And it's about connectivity, it's about housing, it's about making sure that downtown is urban. This location and segment of Church Street is just under a mile from Morgan Square. So again, supporting that walkability will be important in terms of streetscapes. So as these types of uses come online on this corridor, we'll be able to build out that walkability component. We will have more of an urban framework, because buildings will not be set back from the, from the sidewalk, but we're really looking to densify that area. This is also, as I mentioned, a priority corridor. And it's also within the comprehensive plan shown as an infill growth corridor. So again, all of these align with what have been previously stated policies by the city and by the community in terms of wanting to see this corridor, corridor evolve in this way. And with the DT designation, we get that extra layer of review, which I think everyone can appreciate when development is coming online. Again, for consistency, compatibility, and suitability, I think I touched on these points, but it's fairly straightforward because of the elements of this project and this, and the zoning here, that it really comports with what the vision is for the corridor. And marketability, again, we don't feel as though there's anything that would adversely impact the marketability. And in fact, the applicant is here and can speak to the fact that they think it's going to help them in terms of getting their projects off the ground because of this zoning. The split zoning is a bit of a challenge to try to do something there, right? And then the availability of the utilities are there in place. So with that analysis, not only by the staff, but by the planning commission, the recommendation before you is to support the rezoning of this property, to eliminate the split zoning, and then designate it as DT5. Additionally, that DT5 zoning gives us that extra layer of review, as I mentioned.
I didn't know if you were going to go continue through your pictures.
No, those were actually from the applicant. So if you want me to go through those, I can quickly show you their, their concept, if you would like to see that.
So there's a neighboring parcel, if you go back to the map, or go down, or, yeah, the parcel plan or aerial south, that also has the same split zoning. This does not impact that parcel, does it?
Well, wouldn't, in terms of impact, I'm not quite sure.
I wouldn't change the zoning for that.
No, the zoning is only for the orange area there. However, the use is changing, correct? Because we're going to, I mean, the proposal before you is that it would be DT5. Their property still remains that split zone, which is shown here, right there.
So that neighboring parcel that was zoned the same, because clearly they were done together at some point.
Mm-hmm.
Any, they didn't, the owner of that neighboring parcel, any color from them or feedback from them?
Well, yes. So the comments from them were specific about the potential impact of a mixed-use development here, adjacent to them. I think the DT5 zoning provides us a little more assurances because we have this layer of review in terms of how it has to interface with the surrounding context, right? So there are provisions and ways that we can address the development so that it minimizes any impact to that residential use right there.
And when it came back before us in, what, 2023 or two or whatever, I mean, that was one of the concerns with consolidating that parcel in the B3 versus something else, because the DT5 provides more protection for the property owner to the, to the right on your map, but then also seems more compatible with the GID nature of what you have with the college and its proximity to the housing at the college.
Right. Because with the DT5, we have the opportunity to not only have the retail and commercial, but residential as well.
And did you say the, the comments were provided, written comments, from the neighboring property?
Well, there were no written comments. He just made comments into the record, and his question was, you know, how will this impact my property? And so at that time, the applicant spoke to him, and of course, staff spoke to them about how the zoning of DT5 would provide, I don't want to call it protection, but you know, an additional level of review to ensure that there's some compatibility and that there aren't adverse impacts, or at least minimize them.
And I, I think, I mean, I appreciate the work the planning commission does on these rezonings, and I think they ask thoughtful, insightful questions. And it used to be our practice to include the, the minutes, the detailed minutes from the planning commission meetings, where we saw the dialogue back and forth and some of the questions that they asked. And I always found that very helpful and instructive, so I would ask that we include that map, just, just so we, you know, we don't always attend the planning commission and, you know, probably intentionally don't attend those meetings because we, okay. But I think seeing how they deliberated is always informative.
And, and I'll take that point, Commissioner, Councilmember, former. The, I will say with, to you that I think maybe two years ago, maybe even three, that the change in how the minutes were taken changed, and they became just more similar to yours, and they're no longer verbatim. They are available through audio, if you want to sit through and listen to them, but I mean, that's something that we can review again, but that has been in place for, I understand, probably three years now, where they went strictly to just recording the action as opposed to verbatim minutes.
Well, that's fair. I mean, I just, if, if we had them, I was hoping to include them, but I don't want you to go back and create any additional makeovers.
Any other questions?
So if we approve this rezoning, the actual layout and use would go to the DRB?
I'm sorry.
Didn't hear your question.
So if we approve this?
No. Oh, so the, the next step in the process is that, of course, it would come back here for your second reading. If approved there, then that change is on the map, and there is no other board review with the exception of DRB when a formal project is presented, and then it would go before the DRB.
And when this was originally proposed as B3, that there was not necessarily a defined purpose in mind, it was just to give more flexibility to recruit potential investments or, or concepts. Is that still the case?
I believe so. The applicant is here, but I will show you briefly what they shared at the planning commission meeting, was really kind of their marketing material that they've been sharing to move the project forward. There is the intent to have some type of mixed-use development here. I'm not sure if they are at a point where they have something moved forward, but they have several mockups. Again, this would all have to be vetted through the DRB process, because some of these alignments would have to be changed. But they have given some idea about what would happen in a DT zone. You know, we're all talking about parking and placement of building, streetscape, so all of that would have to be addressed.
In DT5, what's the vertical allowance? It was higher than some of the other DT.
You can get up to, I believe, six levels, and then there's a bonus if you are a LEED, you know, LEED certified, or if you do some other provisions within your development, you can get a bonus floor.
Councilwoman Smith? No? You turned it off.
I was gonna, I was gonna fill Rob in, but Fred on dead.
Thank you. All right. No other questions, no other concern? I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the ordinance as read, item B.
Second motion.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any that oppose? Ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. Frazier.
Thank you.
Item eight, we have resolution, resolution approving the purchase of the property located at Crescent Avenue, further identified as tax map 7-16-06-068.01. Presenter will be Mr. Robert Cola, city attorney. Presenter will be Mr. Robert Cola, City Attorney.
Mayor, council members, the next item before you is a request for your permission to allow the city manager to execute the purchase of some property. Those two little parcels there are being offered to the city at a price of $500. This is going to help Powell with the building of the trail, the walking biking trail that's going to go through there eventually. The parcels will be acquired by the city. We'll handle all of the legal research and title work in-house. So there will be no costs except for the $500. And if we knew Ms. Sally was getting people to donate property, we would just ask her to donate. But we think $500 is reasonable to acquire these to help with the acquisition.
Real quick, and I was concerned with, I see the two properties.
Yes, sir.
But it's also surrounded by other private properties.
I think Powell, and that's being led up by Ned Barrett, is trying to get easements across those properties. I think the, I think he was seeking easements for these, but the opportunity to acquire them was just easier and simpler. So we'll actually own those and acquire easements across all the other properties to finish the trail.
And we are already making leeway with acquiring the easement.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
Councilwoman Smith?
Also, I was just going to ask your same question, so everybody's on it tonight.
All right, so no questions, any other questions, concerns?
I make a motion that we approve to purchase the property.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any that oppose? Ayes have it. Thank you. Staff update, Mr. Story.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief.
Thank you.
We, we're excited this week. It's a big week in the history of our community, the opening of Fifth Third Park and minor league baseball opening night tomorrow. I use that as an opportunity to thank several folks who have been heavily engaged in trying to make sure that operations of the downtown on game nights are smooth. We've had a great deal of interdepartmental cooperation across our team, great deal of cooperation with Spartanburgers staff and leadership, who are community-minded professionals and have worked with us very well to make things as smooth as possible. We will certainly learn as we go and we will tweak aspects of those game day operations as we learn more. But really appreciative of the diligence and cooperation of our team in getting to this point. Also want to take the opportunity to thank the properties, the property owners and businesses near the ballpark. They've experienced a great deal of construction, traffic interruptions, things of that nature. And everyone's attitudes and dispositions have been very positive. And that has been a noteworthy affirming aspect of the whole process. It's just how collaborative all the folks have been to try to get to this good point of opening night tomorrow night, which we'll celebrate. And we look forward to the whole community. I know that some of the early ones are sellouts, but there'll be opportunities for others to experience the ballpark. We're looking forward to that. Have a big slate of community events happening across the community, busy spring. And we encourage folks to participate in those. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions about any projects or programs that you might have, but wanted to highlight this tonight.
Councilwoman Smith has one question.
One question. Chris, as we're approaching this time of year, can you give us kind of forecast out what the next timeline is for budget season?
Yes, ma'am. We are deep into budget season already in the fact that each individual department and division has submitted their budget analysis and requests through, to our finance team, which is aggregating those. And often that involves a little bit of communication in both directions, that kind of thing. So that preparatory staff work is pretty deep into that process. Also, there's a core component of that is revenue estimation and that work we're pretty deep into. A lot of our revenues come in in the last quarter of the fiscal year. So it always, there's a degree of uncertainty. But Dennis and his team have prepared a first cut at those two key pieces of the puzzle. We intend to be asking you at your next meeting for any particular priorities of emphasis before we prepare a balanced initial recommendation for you all, which has been our practice. And then from there, we can follow a process that is as deep and as wide as you all would like it to be, as we've done in prior budget years. The community is growing. We do expect some modest revenue growth. We also know we've got some recurring expense challenges. Particularly, just a couple I'll flag now is, you know, attracting and retaining our people is highest on the list of recurring expense priorities. We're looking at a significant health insurance cost increase, which a lot of large employers are this particular year. So a lot of factors go into play and we're assessing those and hope to be in a point to put a balanced plan in front of you this spring as usual.
Chris, do you have a timeline on when our next Morgan Square discussion will be?
Yes, of working with the design team on some tweaks based on prior conversations. We are still adhering to the notion of a construction start in June, as discussed. The basic footprint of the different elements is not significantly shifted. So we won't necessarily need a final design on some of the vertical structures to begin other aspects of the work, including the grading and the pedestrian ways and that type of thing. So we hope to have updated costing within the next several weeks. And that would allow us to bring you a formal authorization action then, as well as updated images on some of the design tweaks that are in the works right now. It's moving.
Will that impact, is Music on Main, is that scheduled through July?
Yeah, we are prepared to modify as needed, remaining in the downtown.
Good. No other questions? Good. Thank you, Mr. Story. We have city council updates. Excuse me. We're going to start with Councilman Rain.
Just want to say I'm excited about opening night tomorrow night. Look forward to seeing everyone there. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith?
Yeah, just a few things. First of all, I want to congratulate Christopher George in the back for getting married this weekend.
Congratulations.
He's our. It was a beautiful ceremony and happy for my friend. Also want to give our Parks and Rec team a shout out. They had a wonderful spring break camp for a lot of our students, both young ones and teens. They did that with the Spartanburg Academic Movement and had a variety of activities. Blake, who was here earlier, is an awesome member of that team. A third, or yeah, Midas, if had, we had more time to talk, I would tell you, and I'll tell you now, that as we're in this time period, both at a federal level, a state level, and thinking locally, we talk a lot as a team about resilience and resilience when it comes to planning and the next natural disaster and how can we be prepared? And we think about those three layers of government. And we see so many things being rolled back on the federal level that are impacting our people, whether that's our seniors who see their retirement plummet with the stock market, when people's medications go up with higher tariffs, when teacher pipelines are cut and we have to have larger classroom sizes because we already suffer with that, when school lunch programs are caught. Those are national decisions that impact the people within our borders. You said that our strength is our proximity. And that also means that we see some of that suffering the closest and quickest. And so I would like for us to be thinking as we think about the budget, as we think about this next several years, how can we at a local level proactive and not just reactive to decisions that we see coming out of Washington and our state legislature to try to build that resilience for our people as much as we possibly can? So I invite you, anyone in this room who are seeing those things and have those policy ideas, please bring them to us. We're available and ready and willing to listen and to make those changes. And then lastly, one of our congressmen, Congressman Clyburn, is going to be doing a town hall at Wofford next Tuesday night. He does not represent our area. Our congressman, despite repeated requests, will not hold a town hall. So we're thankful that Congressman Clyburn will and invite any and all of you to come and listen to him and get some updates from Washington. Thank you.
That's at Wofford at what time?
Six PM.
Six. Make sure they are. Councilwoman Littlejohn.
Yes, I want to congratulate Christopher. I thought you were already married.
He's still in turn on.
I called up here on last week. I couldn't get anybody but Mitch. And I asked Mitch, go, where is everybody? Chris was gone, Bob was not in the office, Kevin was not in, Christie was not in. Everybody that I asked, Belle, that they were not in. And I said to Mitch, well, you know what that means. You were just that good. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Councilwoman Sally?
Thank you all for coming tonight and have a great Easter.
Councilwoman Forman?
Mr. Mayor, Christopher, congratulations. If you got married this weekend, either the honeymoon's over or it hadn't started yet. I hope it's the latter. And as Chris noted, we're in the midst of robust celebrations throughout our community over the past couple of weeks. I'm not just talking about Councilwoman Littlejohn's birthday yesterday, but that's included in those celebrations. But we are going to be celebrating again tomorrow night at Fifth Third Park. And, you know, it should not go without notice that what a community like ours can do when it dreams big, right? There was an article about that in the Herald Journal last week. And when you think of this project, you know, it's easy to call it a baseball project because that's the shiniest object that has come out from the ground so far. But it is truly a transformational project for our community and it includes a tremendous, you know, public-private partnership that is really unlike anything that I think our state has seen. And, you know, I think we shouldn't lose sight of that. And while those are buildings and it creates activity and it affects people, you know, we hear from Midas and Strategic Spartanburg and what they're doing from a community-led, data-driven effort that is designed to affect all areas of our community, from homelessness to mental health and other issues. You know, those are some really, you know, impressive, incredible things. We're not, we're not moving the needle without an intentional effort. And we've got a lot more to do, but we should take a moment to celebrate what we're doing as a community. And it's an exciting time to be in Spartanburg. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Jamie. Mayor Pro Tim?
Mr. Mayor, congratulations, Christopher. I was just speaking to my wife this morning and I was like, gosh, it's going to be six months, you know? And she's like, every day's a honeymoon, you know? So congratulations to you. I saw some of the pictures and you looked very lovely. Had an opportunity to eat my weight in wings and pulled pork at the Hub City Hog Fest, which was another incredible, successful event. Megan, when you talk about resilience, you know, this is a fundraiser that the folks, you know, Brad and his team put together to raise money for mobile meals. I'm not quite sure in terms of the cuts on the federal level, how it's impacted our local mobile meals. I suspect in due time it probably will. So super grateful to those guys to really step up and all the community that comes out and supports such a great event. It was a little bit hotter than I had hoped for. When I'm eating pulled pork, I like it to be like a cool 70 so that I don't get the meat sweats. But that happened and I still enjoyed myself and had a great time. Looking forward to some baseball tomorrow night. And that's pretty much it. I hit the road to go visit the parents on Wednesday. Being a military kid, I don't often and have not often throughout much of my life had an opportunity to spend much time with my parents. So trying to be more intentional about getting out of town to visit them as they are getting up in their years of age and inability to travel and that sort of thing. So looking forward to seeing them if my mother cries one more time. And I was like, I'll be there by six. So looking forward to that. And, you know, Music on Main is going on every Thursday. So y'all come out and support our downtown businesses and restaurants because they really, really need us right now. Thank you.
Good call, good lead in. I do want to thank the downtown businesses that have had to endure the impact from road closures and all the construction that may be that's going on downtown and will continue to go on downtown with the improvements that we have going on. So I want to thank them for their resilience and staying apart just right here from the, our council seat and my mayor's seat. So thank to those folks. Thank Fire Chief Bruton and his team. You all know that we had an arsonist and still I know we are investigating it major. But his team, I give kudos. I got a call that Sunday morning early from a homeowner that said his house was on fire and rode out and saw him and talked with him. But he was just so, so appreciative of the fire men that were there with him, the fire people that helped him to get it out. And again, thank PD for getting one person arrested and hopefully we can find, if there's any more out there, that's involved with that. Again, Music on Main, awesome, awesome. The stuff on the national level, and we know it goes down to the state, but here locally, I do think we do some awesome things with our collaboration. Spartanburgers and the baseball coming to Spartanburg is truly transformative, Jamie. And thank you for those words. But I do personally want to thank the state, Bruce Banister, for instance, Manning Lynch with the county, also Tim Spence with Fifth Third Bank, DBH Diamond Baseball, and I'll thank Tyson Jeffries for that. But also want to thank our local folks, Jordy Johnson and the Johnson family and Johnson Development for their involvement in making Spartanburg that destination spot that we are truly becoming. I also had Miles with the mayor this past Saturday, Awesome Walk. We want to thank Dr., not Dr. Reverend Bootay for volunteering to host and Spartanburg Methodist College for doing it. If you have not, thank the vegetable giveaway, Mike Brown, Angela Edwards. Is it a specific name? I'm forgetting. I'm forgetting the name. Mitch, help me, nobody, no? But thank them for what they, and they've been, this has been going on since the pandemic. And this has been going on since the pandemic. And if you haven't got your newsletter, see Councilwoman Littlejohn. She's going to try to find that name, but we're going to go ahead and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we enter into executive session.
Thank you.
Sustaining Way and NAACP, who's putting that on?
Thank you.
All in favor? Any that oppose? Thank you, thank you.
Are you doing it quarterly now?